...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Ms. Shefnisky, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Corpura?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gafredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Varga Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2024, and July 3rd, 2024?
Motion.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. This evening, we have some people signed up for courtesy of the floor. Asking for no more than five minutes per person. Manny Rigus, Rigus?
Yes.
And just, come on up and just state the town that you're from before you speak.
Okay. I live in Upper Nazareth.
Thank you.
Sure. I defer my time to Beverly Hernandez.
Okay. Beverly Hernandez. Address.
I'm sorry?
Address, or your town that you're from.
Oh, I'm sorry. Palmer Township.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not too far away. So, um, wait, I forgot my notes. Just a first note. Thank you for hearing me, by the way. Just a first note. You're starting the clerk at $170,000? Basically, you're paying for inexperience, okay? When I started the county in 1992, I got $19,000 a year to be a children's youth worker, which is one of the hardest jobs in the, in the universe. I could not do that job more than 10 years, and I had to leave and go to another department. It took me 25 years to get to $52,000, which is what I was earning when I quit, okay? Just a note. All right. So, um, what I want to address tonight is the bond issue. You're floating a bond. Well, when you float something, you float it on the sea. You're floating it on the sea of people, okay? All right. So, let me give you the definition of a bond, because I think a lot of people don't understand what a bond is. It's almost like a loan, but it's not a loan. Let me explain. This is the definition, the pertinent definitions. Something that binds, ties, or fastens together as a fetter, cord, or band. A binding agreement, a covenant, a duty, promise, or obligation by which one is bound. A written or sealed obligation, especially one requiring a payment of written and sealed obligation... I'm, I'm sorry. A written and sealed obligation, especially one requiring a payment of written, of a stipulated amount of money on or before a given day. A sum of money paid as bail or shorty. Well, that sounds a lot like putting us in prison, doesn't it? Okay, one who acts as a bail or bondsman. A certificate of debt issued by a government or corporation guaranteeing payment of the initial investment plus interest by a specified future date. An insurance contract in which an agency guarantees payment to an employer over the event of unforeseen financial loss through the actions of the employee. And then lastly, to pay a mortgage or pay a guaranteed bond on something. To furnish a bond, to join securely. To glue together. Overlapping pattern for solidity, like to lay bricks. Bond paper also. Bond paper is made of rags, which is what the taxpayers are going to be in when you get done with putting this bond out. And I know you're not yet thinking about it, but let me just speak to the matter. Bond is short for bondage, actually, okay? What is the collateral for the bond? What is the collateral? The collateral is the property of us taxpayers. That's what the collateral is. And the taxpayers, or the property owners, I'm sorry, property owners. Apparently, there's 193,000 property owners in Northampton County. Now, divide $63 million by 193,000 property owners, and what do you get? You get an added $677.41 onto our taxes for our property. No, renters don't pay taxes like that. Okay, so the collateral is the security for the loan. So basically, you're putting us in hawk. That's what you're doing, okay? You're pawning us, taxpayers, us, um, property owners in order to borrow $63 million. And that's another issue down there. Or you're hamstringing us. That's another way of putting it. Okay, so... I'd like to know who the contractors are for this. That's a very interesting question. Who are the contractors? They're making a lot of money. I'd like that answer before you approve this, this measure. I'm sorry, I, um, my mouth is very dry. So what will be the consequences of this? What will be the outcomes? Okay, we'll have 20 years of bondage. We'll be like serfs, kind of like it used to be in the old days. We'll be, um, paying extra taxes for 20 years. Maybe the, maybe the tax base, like they did in New York. Maybe the tax base will, they'll just move out, and then you won't have to worry, because you'll have a lot fewer people, unless you can get some rich New Yorkers or from wherever come in and rent or pay to your buy. But you're gonna have, maybe you'll have people moving out to avoid raised taxes. Okay? Or maybe you'll just kick us out of our homes, when we can't pay the taxes on our homes. Then you'll have a lot more homeless, actually. You know, I have, I have a house across the street. Family of four, couldn't pay the taxes. Two little kids. They lost their home. They couldn't pay the taxes. And I now have a neighbor who bought it. Two guys, well, it's a woman. She bought it. She refurbished the home. She's now renting it out as an Airbnb. So I, I went over to talk, to introduce myself to the woman. She, she, "Oh, I don't live here. I'm only here for the weekend, because I'm here for a soccer, you know, baseball tournament." And I was like, "What?" She, "Oh yeah, this is Airbnb. You can look it up." Nobody ever asked us, neighbors, "Do you want an Airbnb across the street from you?" "No, no, no, no." Apparently, well, that's, I have to go talk to the Palmer Supervisors about that. Okay. This is a perfect setup to make the rich richer and the poor poorer, let me tell you. So, as a representative, I brought the aspirin in case I get a headache while I'm talking to you. As a representative of we the people, I am asking that you table this before we the people have an answers. We need answers from the tax assessor, okay? Obviously, you know how much you could float a bond for. Why don't you float a bond for $100 million? Because you don't have the tax base, that's why. That's why it's $63 million. Now, what I want from the tax assessor is I want to know exactly how much my taxes are going to go up after you get this bondage in place. I brought a calculator in case he needs a calculator, okay? Because obviously, he's already done the job, but we the people don't know that figure. We don't know how much you're going to raise our taxes. I do have a gold and silver necklace on. I can give you that now as a kind of a down payment. You know, that's a start. If you wish, I can just take it right off and hand it right over to you. Because you're robbing us blind. You know, how, 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 how much more? What comes after this? And what's the purpose of this bond? Did you ask us what we want to do with the money? Do, do we really need? Don't we have money already set aside? Or is this kind of for your campaigns coming up, so that you win the election?
One minute, please.
I'm sorry?
You have one minute left.
I don't need the minute. I think I've said all I can say, and it's now in your court. Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me.
You're welcome. Next, we have Deb Bureau.
Hi. My name is Deb Bureau, and I live in Upper Nazareth. I wanted to talk about, at the last meeting, the subject came up about the, um, the building, and the building that Bev was just talking about. And at the June meeting, Mr. McClure spoke about the need, and one of the needs that he cited was the fact that the election department is in three different locations, and it's not as secure as it could be if the entire election department was in one area. And yeah, I, I do, I agree with that. It would be great if we could have the election department all in one area. But the reason why I'm speaking tonight is I'm talking about the resolution that was introduced last time I was here. The resolution stated, in part, "For generations, our elections have been safely and soundly implemented by office, our officials." It goes on to say, "Let every eligible voter vote. Let every vote be counted." Our voting process has dramatically changed over the years. Mail-in ballots, drop-in boxes are just two examples of things that are not as secure as they should be and are relatively new. There were 67 counties here in Pennsylvania, and only 14 counties still use drop boxes. Why are drop boxes necessary here in Northampton County? Every voter can certainly get to a mailbox if they don't or can't vote in person. And there's other options, too, besides that. They could come here. I'd like to talk about the November 2023 election, where the retention vote flipped from yes to no and vice versa. There was a HAVA hearing, which means Help America Vote Act. They had a, they had a lawsuit, and during their discovery, they uncovered a couple things. Starting voting started at 7:00 AM, and, you know, that's true. At around 8 o'clock, the judges of election, the Joes, were notified that there was an issue with the switching of the ballots. They were told, "Do not use the machines. Use emergency ballots." Then use provisional ballots until further notice. About an hour after that, around 9 o'clock, the Joes were then told to return to the machines and inform the voters about the votes being reversed, but they would be counted correctly. Approximately two hours after that, Judge Casex ordered the Joes to instruct voters before they enter the vote of the recording issues. Around noon, which is about an hour later, about, well, from 7 o'clock, that would be about five hours, the State Department suggested voters need to understand that what they are, what they're voting on is on the screen. HAVA requires two things. They require a manual count from paper and the threshold for errors. The November 2023 election here in Northampton County failed both of these requirements. One, the paper was incorrect, and two, the rate was too high. I personally spoke to different voters from different precincts, and there was no consistency. Some voters were told to go home. Some were told to come back later. Some voters were given provisional ballots, and some precincts ran out of ballots. I would like to more clarification on let eligible voters vote and let every vote be counted. Is this every US citizen currently residing in Northampton County that is of voter age? I asked for voting clarification, because at an election board meeting where Bev and I attended, when Bev asked, "US citizens voting only?", the president of the election board told Bev, "Everyone that votes and pays taxes is eligible to vote." Let every vote be counted. Are the votes going to be verified? That the voter needs to meet the prior, prior, uh, prior tier, prior tier to vote? To produce a resolution that states our elections are safely and soundly implement, implemented, erases the issue that we have here in our own county. If we don't recognize the issues we are having right here in our county, they will never get addressed. We have a presidential election coming up right here this year, and it is the responsibility of this committee, along with election board, to ensure that the election is secure, and everybody on both sides can agree that yes, this was a transparent election, and I am good with the results. I personally am willing to work with anybody to make sure this happens. I am free. Um, Tom knows me. John knows me. If you want to get in contact with me, I can leave my phone number and my address. I have no problem with that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor this evening? Thank you. Next, I understand that there is a need for an executive session to discuss possible litigation. Can I have a motion from someone to enter into? Thank you. All in, uh, call for the vote, sorry. Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Varga Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corpura?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Um, it is 6:47 PM. Don't take notes. I'm gonna take my phone, so Mr. Heckman, I'll call you when we get in there, okay?
God.
Thank you.
See, she was awarded $93,000 in attorney fees. So she's getting what? An attorney. So she's getting almost 100 here and almost 200 here. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, what's up?
Oh, wow. That's, and I named it really. Oh, that's, oh, that's. Yeah. That's her. Yeah, so I don't know if that's for the talking. Yeah. We really don't have to stay anymore. We can head out. Yeah. Well, Bev's, we, we could stay.
It's up to you.
Yeah, you can. She chose separately, so if you want to go. Okay. Okay. Hope doesn't start to fade, and then it goes to, like, tonight, John speaks. Did you see it last night? Um, she's going to the other. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, that's like. Yeah. Oh, my gosh. She was so, oh, yeah. She was so funny, because she said that her grandfather challenges it to go. And, you know, she's, she's like invisible. She looks like in a bag and stuff like that. Oh, it's, and then there was some that was heartbreaking, because you had to, you know, that losses either husbands or children, and, yeah. 13 people that were killed. I mean, yeah. Yeah. There was one guy that... Yeah. And there was a guy who was World War II veteran. He was 19 years old. He spoke. Oh, my gosh. I was crying when he spoke. That's the old. He was spoken. You wouldn't even know he was there. Like, his skin was beautiful. No wrinkles or anything. Yeah, he looked fantastic. I would have put him maybe in the summer. Yeah. 98. Yeah, him and his wife were married 76 years. Still are, still are married. Born in the... Yes. Yeah. So, yeah. So he had, he has a lot to say. And he, but said, "Mr. Trump, should you go back in office?" He said, "I do need to rest again." Yeah, he talked about, you know.
Francie lost?
Francie lost, and, you know, um, yeah. Oh, yeah. That was the mother. That was the mother. She was, yeah, she was on fire. She didn't have anything to look.
This is a little challenging, but, um, that's really sad.
Oh, yeah. She did well though.
And it has an eight on an equal property. So.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I'll hear about it. That was, he'll come, first of all, go forward, it's the capital. And he'll, he'll do stuff like what you're saying, like, he'll do, he'll goof on us. If you want, we'd do like this. So, it's more, more expensive for me to make a break this, for my boyfriend. Oh, yeah, he called. Yeah. He, he did this thing, because the illegals are in this hotel when they went. And he was trying, he, he pulled this guy up like a. Stein, yes. Is it S-T-E-I-N? Or Y-A-N? Yeah. He did this thing. Yeah, S-F-U-N. I think it's I-N. It's not really even. That's it. That's what I'm, I'm watching you. Yeah. I'm like, she thinks she's that one star. Yeah, it was, the, the one that was funny is when, you know, with all the illegals in New York that's got from this hotel, he just like marches in and stuff like that. He's like, "Hey, I'm trying to find a room for my wife's boyfriend." It's my wife's boyfriend. And everybody's kind of like, "What, what are you saying here?" And he's like, but it was, the funny part about it was this woman, black guy. He doesn't even have a shirt on or anything.
Right.
He's, he's overweight. He's overweight.
God.
Yes. And we're like. And that's. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. He just wants. Yeah. He just wants to stand. Yeah. Oh. Oh. Oh, I tried to think. Your guys are always still on a public responsibility of the facts of property. A letter, we're, we're, from what. Same, that's why you gotta speak. That's what the library, the library.
That's ridiculous.
This was brown, so it was part of a college year to write. No, my god. That's really funny. And then, and then the other, the team is on the, the last meeting, there's something we still confidence it's called. And this woman, yeah. So what it is, it's a list of people that they got that used to live in the same county that moved out.
I sent that to the.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Right. Okay. Yeah. Well, I want to get, I want to get the list and then get a group of people. Like, I, I am, yeah. And what I want to do, I thought Joe Keegan was on there, too. So, me, and Dave, I didn't, and Dave. Okay. Oh, okay. 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 I was thinking that I can send an email to the Patriot Movement people and just send it. Once I get the list of. Right. And then we can set up, because it's going to be expensive, too, because we have to pay for the postage ourselves.
Okay, I know. I think it's worth it, too.
Yeah. And maybe if everybody chips in a little bit. Come on out, get those letters out. She says, she said, she said. Oh.
Gotcha. Yep. Complicated out. There you go.
Oh, wow. Right, that's very subdued, yeah.
No football soccer manager? No, I'm not managing a soccer team either.
No, I'm not managing a soccer team either.
I wish I made a hundred. I wouldn't. I know. I worked on that career over thirty-one years and didn't get there. Yeah.
What's that? Oh, yeah. I was taking a picture though.
Yeah. That was one I found.
Oh, was I?
Yeah. First we go to.
Yeah.
Different camps.
Yeah.
It was wonderful to me. It was a lot, you know? He's doing awesome already there.
Oh, except he looks.
Yeah. It is. Just to get my presentation. But then we were. I'm just. But it. If you want to get back there. Oh, Alex. And then I get half. Oh, right.
Yeah. And Jackie. She was a. Yeah. Yeah. Tuesday. Yes. Or I'll be. You want some. And. Steve Browning. But it was. Yeah, we saw Steve Browning. Oh, you did? And Trevor.
Well, the only one you acquired was the electric. Yeah. So I got Hep A, Hep B, yellow fever. We had Stacy Gary.
Oh.
High boy. Boy or who's doing. And then.
That's a guy.
He's from the drink the water.
He's an old. Yeah.
No, but it's. They get the. Pictures are amazing. Those are just some of them. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I don't do that many. But. Tell me, it's like actually.
I don't know. Do you, does he knew? Oh, really?
He saw so much stuff. All the power watch. Right. Chief. His tree.
It's the one that wants my email?
Yeah. Oh, wow, that's good.
If you see an animal, all the chief, they talk, you know. Right. It's been over.
Oh, too.
Really?
She's leaving one. She's always. I'm. No. I'm.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's. That's.
That's. Having that up.
Yeah.
She doubles. Yeah. And then she. And so she's just walk hard of her pride, but you know, the girls. It's so. I know, that's crazy. Yeah, and they don't care.
That kind of. Yeah, that makes sense.
Not. So if you guys ever get into. I love animals, so, you know, it's great. That would be cool. That would. Even when. I don't know, I'm not going home. I lost my mom. Even when. Really? Yeah. How long do you run? And it's. Well, that's.
Oh, I know. Oh, you're so good to see Mary. I'm good. Uh, six thirty. Yeah.
We started on the roads.
Oh, nice. Yeah. I haven't seen her for a while. I talked to her. I haven't seen her. That's the last. I saw her.
It's all. But we get to.
I like when they have the regular. Yeah.
Go turn around. They've been watching this way.
The roads.
Sixty. I told this is just.
Yeah. That helps me. Then I got another. Yeah. And then I, I use it as a guide. I don't read it for them. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Right.
The Melissa. Oh, gosh. Well, I'm glad you're good. So if anyone's ever close to it. Okay. I can. Good. That's great.
She's in the hall.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Wow. One minute. Okay.
I never watched it.
It was suspicious.
Oh, yes.
It is seven oh six P M. Executive session was held to discuss possible litigation and no action was taken. Oh, that's right. Mr. Heckman did participate by phone. Thank you for reminding me to say that. Next, County Executive Report. Mr. McClure, do you have a report this evening?
That's some bittersweet news to report tonight. Our sheriff is retiring on August second. And, you know, I could, I could say a lot about his career in the NYPD. First, as a transit officer and then as a sergeant in the NYPD. And all of his time here, his nineteen years serving in the Sheriff's Department in Northampton County. He was a deputy, he was a sergeant, he was lieutenant. He worked in most of the divisions of the Sheriff's Department. And he always, to my mind, worked faithfully and honorably and with integrity in the department. And as its sheriff, he exemplified the best of what we would want to see in our public officials, especially those in law enforcement positions. He's, he was measured. He did not overreact, but always took threats seriously. He always, even under fire himself, which sometimes occurred, demonstrated grace even here. When he had tough nights, he, he behaved himself with dignity and was always forthright. And I, he was always forthright with me. And I appreciate him so much and I will miss him very much as our county's sheriff. I think often people in public service are more appreciated after they are no longer in public service. And I think as Sheriff Johnston moves into retirement from public service, his stature as one of our sheriffs is only going to grow over time as people realize what we had. And I am not only professionally, as the county executive, grateful to Sheriff Johnston, but I am personally very grateful to him for guiding the department the way he did for so long. So the county of Northampton recognizes Richard H. Johnston upon his retirement for nineteen years of dedicated service to the county, Lamonge McClure County Executive. Thanks, sir. Congratulations, sir. I'm very happy.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Counsel, thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. McClure personally, or Executive McClure. He's supported me my whole career and afforded me the opportunity to be the sheriff. I want to thank counsel for supporting the department through budgets, our training budget, our equipment, our uniforms, our vehicles. I, I will be asking for new vehicles. No, I won't. Someone else will. I need to thank Sherry Christman and Autumn Brenier for their recruiting and testing. You know, we hired thirty-nine deputies in the last six years and eight clerical staff. I need to thank the Labor Relations Officers, Mark Schaefer and Luke DeBoer for helping me manage our labor issues. I couldn't do it by myself. I need to thank Eric Rotrock and Attorney Soral, Senior and Junior, for doing the sheriff's sales and guiding us through that. I mean, that's tremendous. Eric is the modern Doris and hopefully he stays long enough to help whoever the next sheriff is. I'd also like to thank the Chief Deputy, who has been my immediate supervisor, that's Chief Ziegler, for twelve out of the twenty years that I've here. He's also been the Chief Deputy for six years and helped me being the sheriff. I'd like to thank the lieutenants that helped me, which is Lieutenant Koya, Lieutenant Sheen, Shaheen, Lieutenant Pedridus, Lieutenant Volpe, and Lieutenant Wachowski managed this department as we went through COVID and everything else that we went through over the last six years. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the men and women, the civilians, the deputies and the sergeants that come to work each day, do their job, they serve the courts and the public. And it's because of them that we are accredited. I thank them and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wait, is there anybody who wants to say anything to the sheriff? I see him sneaking out to the pool already. Is there anybody who wants to say anything on the day as to him?
Yeah. I want to, I want to say have fun with Castora learning golf. You guys are going to be doing all right. It was great working with you when I was over there. Thank you for everything.
Yeah. Well, I can't say ditto to the golf, but thank you for your professionalism. You're one of the best parade chauffeurs I've ever had. Don't listen to that. No, but thank you just for everything you've done and for your service here to the county. And enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Sheriff. In, in light, Madam President, in light of your extensive agenda tonight, I don't have any further report except to say that Carly Keesling with PFM is here to answer any questions you might have about the bond.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, first, under old business, I have nothing. Is there any old business that anyone wishes to discuss? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to bring back to the table the bond that had been discussed during our previous meeting as it had been tabled. I'd like to make a motion to bring that back onto the table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote? Oh, is there any discussion?
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corpura?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
The motion fails by a vote of four to five.
Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss? Moving into new business, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for an amendment to the Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article Six, Legislation, Section six oh four B. Can someone please sponsor this ordinance?
Motion to table.
Second.
Can, can we table before it's introduced?
You got to introduce it first.
Well, he's the one who was introducing it, right?
Right. So.
He withdrew it last night.
Can he withdraw it before, or does it have to be introduced and then withdrawn?
You can withdraw it if you'd like.
I thought he withdrew last night.
Well, we have to do it here publicly, so.
Madam President, I withdraw them.
All right, so you're going to withdraw this at this time? Thank you. Note that it's withdrawn. And second, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Northampton County Administrative Code, Article thirteen, Section thirteen point oh nine, competitive negotiations. Would someone please sponsor this ordinance? Thank you. Someone second? The public hearing debate and possible vote will be held on August first, 2024. Thank you. Next, we have consideration of the District Attorney's personnel request resolution. Mr. Giovanni, would you introduce?
Yes. Yes, Miss President. Second. It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time District Attorney, one pay grade CE three, salary sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight in the District Attorney's Office shall be eliminated July nineteenth, 2024. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of two part-time District Attorneys, one pay grade RS seven, salaries totaling one seventeen, one thousand sixty-eight, in the District Attorney Office shall be created effective July twenty-nine, 2024.
Okay, are there any questions for?
I, I have one.
Yes.
If I can. Sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight, that can't be the full salary. That doesn't include benefits and everything?
No, it's just the, the base salary. It's step one.
Right, but that, that, this is just the salary, not the benefits. And the one seventeen, one sixty-eight, is that including all the, well, there are no benefits, they're part-time. So that's two part-time positions replacing a full-time position. But they're going to work more hours together over the year than the full-time person did?
Well.
You know what I mean?
Actually, probably they will. At least their, their contribution to the office will be that way. We've had two part-time positions right now and they're very productive and we appreciate that. I anticipate that one of my full-time staff may be stepping down as a full-time DA, but would still like to work part-time. So I'm actually only considering hiring one. But I think the history in Northampton County was we treated two part-timers to a full-timer as far as the.
Right.
Equivalent impact. But right now, I only anticipate filling one of the part-time positions at this point.
You'll just have the extra in your pocket if you get busy. If football season gets busy and you need a lot of extra work.
Well, I, I think it's more whether or not. I've, I've talked to a lot of people who are very capable and experienced and thought about coming onto the staff part-time and for whatever reason decided not to. If, if I have the opportunity to bring on talent in a part-time position, someone very experienced, I'll do that. But at this point, I might not even fill those positions, those part-time positions at this point. But I, I want the ability, if my full-timer does step down and they still want to work in my office, I want to be able to keep him as a part-timer.
I, I know that for years, John tried to make the office with more full-timers going on and then.
Well, he converted almost the entire office.
Right, I know. And it was a big, it was always coming here and now you're converting back. So you'll end up having how many full-time DA positions as opposed to part-time? Are you going back to? You want, you.
Well, right now, I've officially closed out two. This will officially close out two full-time positions. I believe there are twenty-two full-time positions when I came in. So there will be twenty full-time positions and four, four part-time. So there will be twenty full-time positions and four part-time. Right now, as I stand in front of you, we have fourteen full-time and two part-time. I'll be interviewing someone for another full-time position tomorrow. I expect that over the next year, because I am beginning to interview third-year law students who will be graduating in May and would like to come work in the DA's office. So I'll probably have two or three hires next year in the summer, and I might have another one, full-timer or so. It's hard to say right now because I understand, and I told you when I first came in front of you and I spoke to Mr. McClure and Mr. Barron when I first came in. I think I have a good idea about how county government works and what my responsibilities are. And there's salary budgeted to the DA for professional services, both detectives and DAs. And I assured everyone, including this council, that I'm not going to exceed my budget this year and that I will be, make sure that all my hires will be in line so that I'm within my budget next year as well. So these positions, although I don't know if it's really required that I come in front of you, but I think for transparency, it's good. But I think under the county code, under the Home Rule Charter, I have the ability to move around my exempt positions any way I see fit, so long as I remain within my budget and I don't violate any other statutes, which I don't intend to do. This is still a work in progress. We've made a, I think we've done very well so far, but we are still understaffed, and we still have a lot of work to do, not only to become fully staffed within our budget, but also to finally catch up on the significant backlog. But I think we're doing well right now.
Mr. Gafredo?
Looking at the numbers on the personnel sheet, I think her, the full-time came to nearly a hundred thousand with benefits, so.
That's my question is what the, I didn't, I know you're saying your budget, no, I just was wondering what the whole package was, because it seems to be, it would be about the same.
What?
Apples for apples. That's all I was asking.
It's pretty close, yes.
But no questions for DA Brown?
And if I hear you correctly, then you're saying you have slotted for twenty positions, but you're not currently filled all twenty at this time, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And just so you do know, right now, I'm thinking my sweet spot, so to speak, to be fully staffed, will be between eighteen and nineteen full-time DAs and two or three part-time at this point in time. And if I'm at that slot, I will be within my salary budget, both for this year and next year. I'm not concerned about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, there is a bit of a problem that I'd like to raise.
Well, can we vote on this and then we can bring that up? Because we have one resolution, and my understanding is that you wanted two. So I'm happy to let you speak, but do you want us to pass this first?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
So thank you. My understanding is that there was something else.
Yes.
That you wanted. We can't do it tonight, but if you want to speak to it since you're here, because.
Yeah, and I think those are proceduralish, too, perhaps, that I'd like to address. I submitted two resolutions. Another one was to bring on a Bethlehem City detective as one of my detectives. I have, right now, seven detective positions, no, not seven, nine, but I only anticipate having seven. But in fact, I have six now, and I'm losing the most senior one, Andre Stevens. As of tomorrow, will be retiring and he'll be gone. And I'm bringing on a detective from the city of Bethlehem, Bradford Jones, who's been well-known and a very respected member of the Bethlehem Police Department, taking that position. And I asked to bring him in at a step above the first step. And the clerk for council wrote to me and told me that council did not have authority to consider my request. And on top of that, my request violated the collective bargaining agreement of the detectives, which was pretty heavy legal opinion, I thought, for the secretary to make.
Wait, are you referring to Ms. Shafniski?
Mutterelli?
Oh, no, she's, you said the clerk of council, and she's saying, I didn't say that.
Ms. Mutterelli.
That's, she's with HR.
Oh, HR. I don't know how she spoke in favor, for the Personnel Committee and could stop me, but I just wanted to address her concerns. Because, and I sent case, I sent case law to Mr. Spadoni, which supports the DA's authority to move his pieces around his office, hiring, firing, promoting, disciplining, things of that nature. And I've always protected my rights. It used to be called sixteen-twenty rights under the county code. It's now been changed several weeks ago to, it's now fourteen-seven-two-zero, Section fourteen-seven-two-zero of the county code, which allows me to do that. And the the county charter recognizes the DA's independent authority to do that, especially to have complete control over his exempt employees and also to have control over the career service employees as far as hiring, firing, and promoting. But of course, with regard to salary issues, the DA has to comply with the career service regulations. And I think Section Eight-O-Two of the county charter recognizes that and specifically recognizes that exempt employees and both my attorneys and my detectives are exempt employees, ones under DE, which is detective exempt pay grade, and the lawyers are under the CE, which is career exempt pay grade, that they're within my purview. And as long as I stay within my budget and act responsibly with regard to giving them raises or promoting them, for the most part, it should be ministerial. If I don't require any type of legislative enactment, as long as I comply with the money you told me I have to stay within in order to meet my budget requirements, if I can do that with my moves, the case law says I should be free to do that because I'm an independently elected county official. And also, the county charter reserves that right to me. And I just thought that it was a violation of the county charter to deny me the opportunity to present my resolution and for county council to consider it. So.
So.
I have, I just, I have a problem with the procedure.
Well, we, what I can say is, and I tried to connect with you today, is that I think that we should go back to the drawing board. It's good to hear from you tonight. I think that we should, because again, we didn't even have a resolution in front of us to refer to.
Yes.
We just had some.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't here. I was away in the beginning of the week.
If we could connect prior to the next meeting to see if there is going to be a resolution, present that since you're here, we don't need to wait till another Personnel Meeting since you discussed it tonight.
Well, I'm happy to come back and talk more if you want.
Well, you could do that in August if you want, but I just wanted to let you know when I called you that we didn't have the resolution to be able to entertain it. And so we can't vote on something that didn't exist in front of us. So we could review that for August meeting, if that's okay with you.
And I also want to note, she also referred to the collective bargaining agreement with regard to the detectives. And the collective bargaining agreement sets a floor for the detectives, to protect them so that they can't have monies taken away from them and they can expect anniversary raises and things like that. But certainly, and I'll defer to Mr. Kraft, maybe I'm kind of crazy, but certainly, the collective bargaining agreement did not strip my ability to grant pay raises or promotions to my employees under the collective bargaining agreement. That makes no sense. But apparently, that was another belief, that if I were to promote my detectives, that I would violate their union agreement.
They, all your detectives are under collective bargaining?
Yes.
They're all under a union contract?
Yes, with regard to terms and conditions of.
There might be something there.
What?
Whatever she's saying, there might be something there. I don't know. You know, collective bargaining. We can go down this wormhole, but.
Bargaining agreement, that's Section Six of the agreement, sets the floor. They're entitled to certain anniversary. But if I move them up, that doesn't violate the agreement. The agreement didn't say I can't.
I haven't read their crazy collective bargaining agreement, but you know what I mean.
It doesn't say I can't promote them.
We'll talk about it over breakfast. It'd be a good discussion.
Do I have to pay?
No, I'll buy.
I just thought you were deferring on him to decide whether you were crazy or not.
Well, as.
That's the wrong direction to go.
The person who's well-versed with collective bargaining agreements, I thought.
You'd have to read the whole.
Yeah, I would, I would love, I would love to hear your opinion about that.
I would say that this.
Now, that I'll read, Mr. Spadoni, the whole bargaining agreement. That'll be, that'll read.
I have a copy of it if you need it.
Sure, I'll get it to me.
So then we can agree to continue in August and review this further and try to get an answer before our next council meeting for you?
I would only ask, so I understand the procedure. What do I need to do to get to you? Because the old procedure didn't work. I couldn't get to you with this.
I would say. Yes, sir, Mr. Heckman.
Mr. Morganelli would oftentimes, he felt he was being blocked by someone, would come directly to council with his resolution because ultimately it is council's job whether or not we're going to approve a position or not.
So, whatever you need me to do, I'll do.
If you need to. Well, you have a mic, so turn it on and say it.
The district attorney, if you bring the resolution to the county clerk, with this one, we will review it and act on it.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sorry.
Yeah, so she gets enough, please.
Yes, it's not easy.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you.
You, too. All right, next, we have the consideration of the County Executive's Appointments and Reappointments Resolution, Conservation District Board, Farmland Preservation Board, Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, Parks, Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce the resolution?
Yes. We're going to introduce them all at one time, and we'll vote on them. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in that their appointment, reapportment indicated below. Conservation District Board, appointment, Will Carpenter, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-eight. Farmland Preservation, Robert Anxt, Bath, PA, term to expire six thirty twenty-seven. Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, appointment, Jared Mass, Easton, PA, term to expire three, March second twenty-five. Parks, Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board, appointment, Greg Zabrowski, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire three nineteen twenty-five.
Any discussion on any of the appointments? These were all reviewed yesterday at Personnel Committee. Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Jeff, Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of council staff job description and salary resolutions. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce the resolution on staff descriptions?
Job descriptions, okay. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the attached job description of deputy clerk to council shall be amended as indicated hereafter. The bold underline have been added and sections marked with strikeout can be deleted. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the attached job description of the clerk of the council shall be amended and indicated hereafter with the bold underline and have been added and the section mark with strikeout be deleted.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter? We again reviewed this. People were asked, they were given time to make their adjustments, and this was discussed yesterday. Yes, sir.
Are we voting on the salaries, do we, tonight?
Yes, but we're voting on the job descriptions first.
Oh, so this has nothing to do with the salaries? There'll be a second vote?
No, this is the change of the wording on the job descriptions or any amendment.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the resolution on the deputy, on the clerk's salary. Excuse me, Mr. Giovanni, will you please introduce?
Yes. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time clerk to council, pay grade CE six one A, salary one oh seven four eight two, in the office of the County Council shall be graded to pay grade, which is a blank in the salary effective June nineteenth, 2024.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the pay grade and the salary. Yes, sir, Mr. Brown?
I'll make a motion to the pay grades should remain at CE six one A, salary one oh seven four eighty-two.
Second.
Who's the second? Mr. Corporah? Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Yes.
So this is, this has been difficult for me, you know, as we've been talking about this. And despite what some people say, I do put a lot of thought into my votes. I have agreed with Mr. Gafredo with all of his concerns since we've been talking about this. And I thought a lot about it today. I can't think of any profession where the starting salary is the salary where the last person left off. I'm just learning that our, the three people that work under the County Council have no evaluation process. I find that shocking. There's no incentive to improve professionally when you don't have an evaluation process. There's no way to know how you're doing in your job. Are you doing a good job or are you not doing a good job? And there's no chance for recognition. And not having an evaluation process can lead to a lawsuit. I want to see us create an evaluation process so our employees have room to advance and grow into their jobs and feel valued, not just going straight to the top. And this has nothing to do with the person. This has just been the situation here. And just because it's been done in the past, I feel is a poor excuse to continue this tradition. And I.
Order, please, excuse me. No comments, please. Thank you, Ms. Keegan.
And I would like to see the person who has this position move up and get incremental, you know, salary increases as they go, as they're growing into their job. And that's where, this is what happens in every other profession. So I'm just a little, you know, it surprised me, that's all, and I just, I can't. And this is hard for me. I really thought a lot about it today. Like I said, I just can't support it. And this is what I would like to see happen for us moving forward.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say something. This position is evaluated by nine people every day of the week. When something's done wrong, we know about it. This position is our exempt position.
This position is our exempt position that the council has, and we've had forever. And this position can be taken away and it can be fired by a vote of five people at any time. If they're not doing their job and they're not performing. They're evaluated every day. You know the evaluations, I mean, besides that, this is, it's our exempt position, it's, it's how it works. And we, we affirm that person as the clerk, we don't do it every year, I don't believe, but if there is a problem, they're exempt, they can be replaced with someone else. So, I will be supporting this position. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Brown, then Mr. Giovanni? Just a moment, Mr. Heckman.
My comment is, it's great, it's the first step in the grade. And how, every time there's a cola involved here, over the years, that grade increases. There's no control over what happens, it's just what happens with the cola. So, the starting rate has increased to 107. I'm sure that wasn't the starting grade when Linda was here, hers was much lower. But as the years went by and the colas increased, it increases the first level of the grade. Mr. Executive said that when he did that with the ESIU. They're getting a cola for the next three years, that starting grade is gonna increase for those people. The same thing is happening here, that towards 107. That's my comment.
Go ahead.
I can't say I share some of the same sentiments as Ms. Keegan, although I do agree with the way she's gonna ultimately be voting. I think it's just, it's, it's common practice. And I think the way she alluded to the fact that to hire somebody into a position at the same salary, that the 25-year experienced person or 20-year experienced person leaving, I just think it's bad business by us as the bosses. So, I do think that the 107 salary is on the higher end of the spectrum where it should be. And I think it would be more pragmatic to reevaluate the group, so I'll not be supporting this.
I think what is not appreciated in a job description is the complexities of the job and the importance that that one position to this council actually requires. They interact and represent this council when we're not here. We're part-time, we show up so many meetings a year, they're here as our voice, our action, getting things done that we need to get done. It's not, the title clerk can be misleading, it is not. That is a very in-depth, complicated position. And this clerk is our right-hand person, making sure that our needs, wants and desires are represented within the vast body of the county. I understand the modeling that has been talked about from the outside and other practices. But this position and this body is not like any other anywhere else. It's not like out in the private sector and not even within some other departments. So, I do believe we need to, the incentive is to offer the salary, to keep the person, to make sure that whoever's in that role will be here for 25 years or 15 years, that type of thing. And the knowledge that is required to do this job is not something that's easily earned either. So, that's why I recommended that we continue with where we left off. There is incentive in terms of the scale, overall, it's the first step on that scale, I understand the concern. But I think you're really, I believe to do anything else, to take a step back from here is actually doing an injustice to the, to the office that the person that we're looking to hire into that ultimately, and the things we require. And there isn't anybody on this bench right now that hasn't reached out or had a need, and we expect them to be there, we expect them to get the appropriate information and to do our business for all nine of us at any given time, plus our solicitor. Plus, anybody from the county, the executive branch that reaches out. They're responsible for interacting and responding accordingly. So, that was the basis for why I felt maintaining this was, was important. And I do appreciate the comments and the consideration. I'm not opposed to, Ms. Keegan, your comment about giving more formalized feedback and so on and so forth. Those, those exist within the county and, and other areas and could be accommodated in some way. But I wanted to just expand a little bit on why I felt it was important to maintain that. Thank you.
Mr. Kupora, did you want to? Mr. Heckman, and then I'll come back around, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Okay, I thought some points were well-made that, thanks, that were the idea that as far as the evaluation to go, one of the problems we have is, I think you could go to just about any department, you're supposed to do yearly evaluation. You go to any department in the county, and I doubt everybody has a yearly evaluation done. Supervisors, they'll, they drag their feet, now, maybe they've changed, or maybe tomorrow there'll be a rush to do them, I don't know. But that's always been a, been a problem. The second is that this job has, I keep hearing that this job is just a clerk, just a clerk. Why are we doing this? And it was pointed out that this, this job has no protection. This job is an at-will job. This job, it can go, whoever has it, it can go away tomorrow. Five, five people say that it can, and that point was... I, I think, the one thing I've heard a lot is he's being paid too much, paying too much, he's just a clerk. Well, first of all, Ms. Shafnitsky's a law school graduate, number one, I'll just say that. And number two, no one has said, well, maybe the clerks in the county aren't paid enough. We have, we have an issue with pay, I still say that. We, we, the classification system, the step system, and I'm not gonna blame all this on administration, but I blame it on complicit county councils. But the entire pay system we have has been thrown out, that was envisioned and put in place, ever since Ms. Shafnitsky left. And now, it's just hit or miss every year. And, and I would, and if people say, well, we have bargaining units, well, I'm, I'm a little concerned with them too. We, we don't really have a real, we don't have a step system anymore, and that's unfortunate. People could then judge their progress as they run along. Now, there's no way to do that. We call steps colas, we call colas steps. It's, it's, it's just, it's like a private company. So, I would say this, I, I don't know, I really am torn on this. I think Ms. Shafnitsky, or whoever does it, has a job that is not comparable to many other jobs in the county. Is she paid much, is she too little? It's hard to say. When, when Mr. Solicitor left, council at that time decided to pay, I think the same pay grade for, for Ms. Zembo. And they could have changed it then, and they did. So, I, I would, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I really have to abstain on this. I just don't know, and I would say as far as evaluation go, when I was president of council, I had meetings with Ms. Zembo at least monthly, if not more often. And we'd go over things that I thought were not working well in the offices, and that were working well. And, and it's sort of an ongoing process, at least that's how I felt. So, I, I just think that there's been a lot of misinformation thrown around regarding this job and this position, and it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate, to say the least. So, that's all I had to say.
Mr. Warren, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think I've gone on record in previous meetings saying I don't necessarily agree with how this particular situation was handled. That being said, I think every single member of this council tonight that spoke had really good points. And I do think that we are at that point in the process, I think we are at that line where we have to move forward, and I think that's what is good for this council and the operations of this council. I will be voting in favor of, of moving forward with regard to these salaries. Again, I don't, don't agree with how it was all handled over the long term, but I think we're at that line where we need to move on.
Yes.
I'm not saying that the job isn't complex, I hope nobody thought that of me. I haven't heard that anyone say that the job is just a clerk job, I have not heard that either. I know this job is very, very hard. I know that this position is our face when we're not here. But I, and I hear you about the cola, and a cola's great, right? But it isn't a reflection of a job well-done. An evaluation process is very important, it's a reflection of your professionalism. I enjoy my evaluation every year. I, I have to self-evaluate, I have to write down why I, I wrote what I did, and then I enjoy getting the feedback. I enjoy having my supervisor tell me, you did a good job. Or, you know, maybe you could, you could have done it differently, or whatever. But I feel like, you know, the cola's great, but it's not coming, when you come to your job and you enjoy your job and you're doing a great job, you want it on paper. I get what you're saying, that, you know, we, we evaluate them every single day. But I just feel like this process needs to change.
I just want to make a few comments, and then I want to vote on the amendment. I guess, do I vote on it as an amendment, or do I? Well, it's a resolution, but we had to fill it in, so he's advising me that I have to vote on it as an amendment and then vote for it?
There's amendment made by Mr.
You gotta put the mic on.
There's an amendment from Mr. Brown that's in front of council to fill in, and I think if I wrote it down correctly...
He made a motion, he didn't make an amendment. He made the motion to fill in the blanks with what he stated.
Well, then we need a motion for an amendment.
Why do I need a motion for an amendment if he made the motion? I entertained the motion for the pay grade, we got the second, we're doing the discussion.
Right, because you're now filling in what was blank.
So, I have to vote on it to fill in the blanks and then vote on it when it's filled in?
Then you have to vote on it as amended if it passes.
Okay, so... All right. I'll hold my comments in between, how's that, to get this done? So, vote on the amendments proposed by Mr., the 107-482 and pay grade CE6-1A. Call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
And Mr. Heckman?
This was only, I thought we were voting to put the, what Mr. Brown said to put in here.
Yes.
And then we're gonna vote...
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to one.
Okay, so now, we're gonna vote on the motion as it's filled in, yes or no, correct?
I can't hear you. Now, you're gonna vote on the amend, the ordinance as amended?
On the resolution as amended.
On the resolution as amended, correct, I'm sorry.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
If you abstain, shouldn't there be a conflict of interest? I mean, can we just abstain because we don't want to vote? I, I don't unders, I'm, I'm just asking for my own...
I can't speak to that. I mean, I think people have all their reasons in the world to abstain. I can't, is there a legal reason that, that has to be given for abstention?
No, the commissioner's gonna exercise their ability to vote for, against, or abstain.
Okay, and you don't need a reason?
You do not need a reason.
Okay.
We're not gonna get into motivations of why people vote the way they vote.
I'm sorry, I just thought there had to be, like, a conflict or something.
If there is a conflict of interest, then that would remove the person, there would not be an abstention, they would not vote.
So, I guess I want to make my comment, is that there's been a lot of drama around this position and this number. First of all, Ms. Zembo was not paid this when she left the door. She had colas, she had moved up a step, so she was making a different amount of money completely from this. So, the, the belief that this is the same amount of money that Linda got is false. Number two, our person deserves this money. When Mr., I thought about this on the way in, and when Mr. Dirtinger was hired, and I was here when I first came on, and you were there with me and a few others. We were told why it was so important to raise the salary, because of his experience, even though the director of administration was at a certain level, but it was asked for, and we voted on it based on the argument that was given. There was a comment about the county executive's salary. When I proposed the salary changes, my original proposition was $125,000, because I believed that the county executive should be the highest-paid person within our purview. Obviously, these judges make more than that, but again, we don't have control over that. That was voted down by this body, and it was settled at 105, because that's what this body decided to do. We have the right to set salaries, and I really feel impassioned about setting a reasonable and professional salary equivalent to the other people at this grade. There are other people that have been brought up by the county executive and other directors that they want this salary, and I've never seen as much controversy over that, whether I thought they had experience or not, than I have at this position, at this time. And with respect to Mr. Warren and how this was handled, I have apologized for how I handled it once. I'm gonna tell you why I did. I was a little too cautious in my choice to make sure that everybody was heard and everybody had a say, and I doubled back, and I think I was too cautious. You know, if I could do it all over again, I probably would have proposed this earlier, and I probably would have proposed her earlier and moved it forward without anybody's discussion or input. Because my, I see now that the error of my ways was to ask everybody's opinion, and now I've gotten them. And you know what they say about opinions? And so, now we're at this point, I'd like to get this done. I really think, whether it's this person that retains this job or anybody, and I know that we're not gonna pick somebody who doesn't have the ability to do it and has more experience. I think the comment that I heard earlier this evening was that we were gonna promote, like, somebody without any skills, or, this, this is a qualified position. And we took some time to interview some people, and I don't think we were comfortable with some of the level of skill that we got, which is why we've deferred to this level at this time. You know, the idea that what I made when I first started and what I make now, you know, I started working a long, long time ago, my first salary was probably $2 an hour or something, like legitimately. And, and it's just a false narrative. If I don't like the salary in the profession that I'm in, then I need to move on. I didn't like where I worked, at one point, I went to private practice, I came back. People have the right to choose to work, and when you choose to work for a system, you work for the system that you're under, whether that's collective bargaining, whether that's a, a union or a non-union, or whether you make your own salary and you don't get any benefits at all. So, I, I just think we need to get this done, as you said, and move on and get to hiring the right people for the position. But I'm sorry that I delayed it in the interest of trying to make everybody happy. I will be more thoughtful about that, and I'm gonna maybe just be a little more authoritative in the future. But I was trying to build some collaboration, and it didn't work. So, that's my only comment, is there any other discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kupora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Mrs. Keegan?
No.
Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. Next, we have the resolution on the deputy clerk's salary. May I have a motion for the pay grade and the salary for that, please?
You want me to make a motion for what I think these blanks should be for?
No, we had it, we decided on it yesterday.
What's due, it's not in there.
Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce the resolution on the deputy clerk?
Yes.
And you're right about that.
We're right, I don't have the paper for that. That we had yesterday.
The, it is hereby resolved, just read the resolution with the blanks, please, and I have the number.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the position of one full-time deputy clerk to council, pay grade CEI-1A, salary 51-461, in the office of the county council shall be upgraded to pay grade blank, salary blank, effective date of June 19, 2024. effective date of June 19, 2024.
Now, can I have a motion for a suggested pay grade and salary? And there's a sheet behind this?
Yeah, I have one picked out.
And yesterday, the discussion was between group three or group four?
I have, I'll make, I would like to make a motion to upgrade the pay grade to group four, 1A, $81,541 a year.
Thank you.
Second.
Second already. That was fast.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. On the amendment.
Mr. Kraft?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
Mr. Hackman? Ms. Keegan? Adopted by a vote of eight to one.
Thank you. And now I need to vote on the motion as amended?
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman? Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration. I'm sorry? Yes, sir. It's very hard to hear you. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ron. Are you there?
Oh, he's good.
Can he call in on the regular system?
This is, oh, yeah.
We discussed this yesterday.
Is anybody there?
Yes.
What happened?
You went into the vapors, but we got you back. You wanted a point of order?
Yes. A point of order and then I can say, uh, the vote we took on the assistance salary, I thought that Mr. Gafredo and Ms. Keegan voted no, but the clerk said it was an eight to one vote. Am I mistaken?
You are mistaken. I was the only one that voted no on the amendment.
I, I, I apologize. And Madam President, would you please ask Mr. Barron to get through back for our realistic phone?
So I, I couldn't even hear your request. I'm so sorry. You have to just.
Can he text it to us?
I don't know. We're not allowed to receive texts up here. I'm going to move forward on the consideration of election integrity resolution. Ms. Keegan?
I'm to read this, correct?
Please.
Okay. All right, whereas founded in 2020, Keep Our Republic is a nonpartisan civic education organization dedicated to protecting a republic of laws and strengthening the checks and balances of our democratic electoral system. And whereas the founders of Keep Our Republic created a compact for public officials and everyday concerns, citizens dedicated to protecting the core of democracy. The vote ends, whereas the words of the compact are as follows. "We Americans are blessed with a reliable, free, and fair electoral system that works to ensure that the voices of the people are heard. For generations, our elections have been safely and soundly implemented by officials and volunteers at the state, county, and precinct levels. We cherish these civic traditions which have made our country the beacon of democracy around the world. We rededicate ourselves now to uphold the following basic principles and we call upon our fellow citizens to do the same. Let every eligible voter vote. Let every vote be counted. Let the electoral count stand. Respect the voice of the people in each state as expressed in the popular vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the county of Northampton affirms and adopts this compact to serve as the guiding principles in the administration of our elections in 2024 and beyond."
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Mr. Gafredo?
Um, I, we spoke quite a bit about this last night and I don't want to go into any more detail than I need to. But this does seem like a very, as Mr. McClure said, uncontroversial resolution. And if you take it for at its word, I, I agree. It's not controversial at all. The problem is, I think that over the last four years, our election systems have changed dramatically. And there have been problems. And I don't think anybody here has once said that the county employees or our elections office is the reasoning behind that. I think they are the ones that have to deal with the system that is put in place, that we have to live with. And I'll be voting no just as a sheer protest of the fact that this is the system that we have. I think it's full of holes and problems. And I think that our county is going to have to keep experiencing problems until we fix it. And I feel sorry for our election workers for having to deal with it. But we do have problems and I think we've experienced them. And I think we're going to continue to experience them until we fix them.
Any other discussion? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, in our, in our discussion yesterday, you know, we, we talked about election integrity. And I think this body has, over a period of time, demonstrated a commitment to this, what's in this resolution, including holding the administration accountable for flaws in the, in the machines and the process with that. And I think in the formation of the integrity, election integrity committee by this body to provide, make sure there is a voice and some input in the election process. So I think we've already demonstrated that and I think we've actually done numerous things. A resolution like this, similar to, I think, the conversation we had on Mr. Corporah's ordinance, I think it was, that he was intending. To me, this is just kind of like fluff. So for that reason, you know, I'd like to not have these resolutions coming forth. The principles in it, I, I think are appropriate and accurate, it's not about what the content, but I don't think we need to keep restating and taking an oath over and over and over and over and over again regarding the actions, especially around elections. So that, I'll be not supporting it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Hello?
Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, all right. I, I'm sorry. I, I'm in my recuperative bunker. I, I did watch the committee meeting yesterday. And let me just say that, wow, I'm getting a feedback like Mr. Barron talks about. I've never had this problem with any other court or authority. But I, yeah, okay, let me, I'm sorry. Bear with me. I agree with Mr. Brown in many ways. I, I don't, I, I, I think that we can go by the term, use truths as self-evidence. I, I, when I got this, I looked up at the organization. It's out of Wisconsin. It has old piles and political activists working it. And, and they're angry because Trump didn't accept the votes. I don't think that they're going to change Trump's mind in this coming election if he loses. I also immediately got turned off when they showed a submit donation button. So I thought, okay, that, that means I'm not interested in them. And, and I don't really need to bend the knee to some out-of-state group asking me to reaffirm what I have said a hundred times up on council that I believe our county elections are fair and they're legal. Mr. Gafredo and I don't agree on everything. I, I can't speak for the whole state or the entire county, country. But in Northampton County, I feel confident. And to me personally, I think this is more of a war over the word integrity. When we formed the committee, we took a lot of pushback. How dare you? The word integrity is inflammatory. Yet the word integrity is in this resolution. So it's like a binary choice. Our integrity is pure. His integrity is evil. It's silly. It's nonsense. It wastes the time. I will definitely be voting no. Thank you.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
No.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
Mr. Hackman?
No.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
No.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Fails by a vote of three to six.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of the, oh, I'm off mic. We have the consideration of administrative code, Article 13, contract resolution, Wilmer R. Schultzing. Mr. Warren, will you please introduce?
Whereas Northampton County's administrative code, Article 8, procurement and disposition of county property, Section 13.5, contracts and agreements, C.2 requires approval of county council for any contract where costs are to be funded with monies outside of county counts, uh, outside of the county's general fund, such as those funded through bonded indebtedness. And whereas on July 9, 2024, the county council, Northampton County council, received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract in the estimated amount of $138,700 with Wilmer R. Schultz Incorporated for the kitchen renovations at the Nazareth Senior Center to be completed six months after notice to proceed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Wilmer R. Schultz Incorporated.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? It was discussed yesterday at finance. Call for the vote.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman? Okay. Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss this evening? Is there any committee, council, council committee reports? Mr. Giovanni, we'll go down the line. Mr. Giovanni?
We had our personnel meeting yesterday. And the fruits of that meeting was the reappointments, appointments of the executive, the resolution for the district attorney. And we also discussed job descriptions and the salaries for the clerk and the deputy clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I don't have a committee report. I just wanted to acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Wesley Smith, Mayor for Wind Gap Borough is in the audience attending our meeting this evening.
Oh, welcome. Thank you for joining us for our fun-filled family fun. I had a governance committee yesterday. Some of the fruits of the labor were introduced here this evening and the rest was just good old-fashioned discussion to be continued. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Madam President. Finance committee met yesterday. We specifically talked about the administration's proposed parking deck and office space with regard to the bond and the budget overview that was presented to us, along with other matters of previous resolutions where we haven't necessarily received a resolution in terms of those appropriated funds, among some other fruitful discussions.
Thank you. Anything else in terms of committee? And council liaison reports? I'll start this way and go this way. Liaison. I attended the LVEDC meeting this week. Two major points, what was held at DeSail University. I guess it floats around and you get to see other, the different people on the board and where they're from and what they do. But the highlight was that the governor has been coming to the valley recently many times. He sees the Lehigh Valley as part of his economic development package. And that, I guess, there was some really good news out of the legislation and the budget regarding that. And Lehigh Valley is on target to receive a good chunk of that money. So that was good news. The other thing is that it was an interesting exercise. There was a consultant there and we did a focus group. I guess there were four other groups that met prior to ours and the board met and did this group to discuss our perceptions about economic development in Lehigh Valley. What's good, what's not, what we'd like to see. And some of the comments were interesting. And I think it's, you know, the idea that people don't want to see more warehouses. They don't want to see more distribution centers. They do want to see more manufacturing, that maybe we're not retaining enough creativity in young people. They talked about what you would vision in terms of training. And what are some of the, what are the, some of the things that make us good? And what are some of the obstacles that maybe keep us from developing ourselves? And so I thought it was a productive exercise. He's going to take our data along with the rest and then there'll be a presentation of the final report in September, which I'll bring back. But I, I think, I think it's interesting. And it's also maybe some questions to ask the constituents because we do have a lot of economic development presentations here, but sometimes they tend to be very targeted and focused. And, and, and I don't know, maybe there's some opportunity to expand some of the people that we hear from. So it was, it was a good, it was eye-opening. And that's all I have.
I think, I, I've read reports like that before. And what would be interesting, and I, I haven't seen it and if it exists, I, I'd like to be able to see it, is often we'll vote a project and we'll have the developers here and they'll promise it'll create 1,000 jobs, 550 jobs. And we grant them, whether it be tax breaks or monies or something like that. But we don't actually, I don't know if we ever go back and actually do a forensic on it. Say, did it actually materialize in the way it was presented? Or was it completely way off? So it's kind of hard to gauge sometimes how these projects really go. Often they do, or do they exceed what they promised? I'm not sure. But I think that would be an interesting study to take a look at, random selection of key projects. Did it or did it not materialize the way it was pitched to the body? And often we don't hear about it again. You know, they get the money, they move on and it doesn't come back to us. So it'd be an interesting caveat or add-on to the study that they're.
And one of the points that was brought up, and since the esteemed mayor is here, they did talk about the permitting process that sometimes seems a deterrent in the valley. And so again, I don't know if the municipalities have a meeting where they meet quarterly or monthly or whatever, because I'm not privileged to know about that. But again, people looking at their own process, because if I say I'm going to land in Wind Gap and I want that, but that council takes a certain amount of time to do something, does that delay a project? And, and it seems like there have been some real near misses here in the valley because of some of the delays, not in Wind Gap. I used you as an example because you're here. But do you know what I'm saying? Like sometimes, or the, or the sense of, well, we've got to think about it. You know, the other thing, and I don't know if it ties in with your committee, but the idea of agriculture, like agriculture, we're still a bit of agro, even though we have a lot of, of warehousing and stuff. And we don't talk about agriculture as much as an industry and, and how that's being supported or developed. And, you know, I don't know if that's your committee or if it's economic development, if we want to do our own special just report on that. Because I know that there's active farms still here in the county. And that, whether they're preserved or not is one thing, but are they functioning? And how does that work is another. So, did you want to say something? Because you are an industry, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, depending on the township, it's all, you know, it's very subjective to the township you're working in. But as far as the farming, I think that'd be two things. The person that spoke at that conference, would they want to come speak at the economic development meeting? Is there anybody that you would like to come bring here for it? I would say we can talk about that later. But then the other thing is, I don't know if this is energy, environmental and land use or economic development, but regenerative farming is something I think is, you know, we still do have a significant amount of farming in this county, especially up north. And it's getting to be more and more well-known that industrial farming is a lot less productive as far as the nutrition you get out of the food. And it's, it's a lot less diverse as far as what you produce. And it's, it's a lot less diverse as far as what you produce. So I think if this county is serious about preserving farms, I think we should also be talking about, talking about young kids getting into the industry